Well, good morning, everyone. So good to have you here. And at this time, I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session for June the 11th, 2024, to order. And like to welcome elected officials, Solicitor General LaWanna Nolan and Judge O'Connor. And I guess that's about it. We've got a special guest here. Ms. Jessica Edwards is our new DFAX Director, and she's sitting right there. Did I miss anybody? County Attorney?
No, sir.
Okay. He has to keep me straight. Marshall bring the list for citizens wishing to speak. And if you have your cell phone still on, it's a good time to silence it. Thank you, Tommy. So we begin our meetings with prayer, and here's one that I'm just going to read for this morning's prayer that you're all familiar with, Serenity Prayer. "God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference." Let's stand and pledge our plea. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." The minutes this morning, the minutes for the May 28th work session and the May 28th board meeting minutes are available for review located on that back table. Under announcements, Team Paulding Employee of the Month is so much fun. It's another thing Baker Street County Manager Frank Baker is brought to our meetings and great morale builder for our employees. So Braden Robinson is this month's, from Paulding County Human Resources, is this month's Employee of the Month. Let's watch the video.
I nominated Braden Robinson in HR. When I would leave this building from the third floor coming down to the parking lot, I would see him almost every day. If I ever had books in my hand or boxes I was carrying in my car, he would always say, "Let me get that for you. Let me carry that for you." He would literally take my boxes, walk me to my car, and I would say, "No, no, no. You don't need to do this. This is not your job." He'd say, "No, no, no. I want to walk you to your car. I want to carry your boxes." And I would always say to him, "Boy, your momma raised a good boy." He's always so positive. He's always smiling. He has such a bubbly personality, and he makes you feel comfortable just being in his presence. He's an amazing worker. I don't care what I've called him about, from when I was going through issues with my insurance, when I had issues with, when I lost my dad last year with bereavement. I don't care what I called him about. He had the answers.
Every day is a different day in HR, but Braden always brings a smile, excellent customer service to anybody, employees, the public. He does, he helps with our new hires. He helps process them, gets them through the whole process. He's big with that, with our new hires.
And I would say just to be upbeat like him, be positive like him, and treat people like you want to be treated. Be kind to people, and that's what he does. If it's anything pertaining to HR, you call him. He's going to be there for you.
Where is he?
Is he working?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just acknowledge the fact that Braden was the first one to win this award twice. And so it was really cool to see that in his expression when he came into my office when we did that last week. So, but he won it in another department. He was with Community Development when he won it the first time, and then now he's won it a second time with HR. So my hat's off to him.
And now everybody wants him in their department.
And isn't he the only male in the department?
Yes.
So, you know, condolences. Great guy, great American, great employee. We don't have any invited guests this morning on the bid awards. Item two is discuss action to award the fiscal year 2024 bituminous surface treatment contract one project to the lowest responsible bidder, Russell Standard, in the amount of $454,155.50. Funds for the project will be allocated from the Paulding County General Fund. The roads in this project are located in all, every post. George Jones to enlighten us further.
I'll do my best, Chairman. Good morning. Paulding County Finance Department advertised the DOT's project identified as the FY2024 bituminous surface treatment contract one. The project consists of 7.85 miles of triple surface treatment on 17 county roads. Majority of these roads are either milling surface or old surface treatment roads. Paulding County DOT forces will prep the work for these roads to get them ready for the bituminous surface treatment. Two bids for this project received and opened on May 17th, 2024. The low bidder was Russell Standard in the amount of $454,155.50. Paulding DOT has reviewed the two bids and recommend award to the lowest responsible bidder, Russell Standard. The cost is reasonable with comparisons of the work of this type let out over the last few years. Funding from this contract will be provided from general funds, and as you said, the roads are all in all posts. And if approved, the contract completion date is November 30th, 2024. And again, with this work, we believe the work orders will go down on these roads. We typically get a lot of work orders, a lot of work order requests for these older surface treatment millings road. We haven't really done any surface treatment for the last 25-plus years, so it's time.
Any questions for George? Thank you, George.
Thank you.
All right. And a little interruption in the schedule here, or maybe something that I missed. There is another elected official in the room, Judge Woodall. So since you're hiding back there behind everybody, you need to come up and tell us about Ty David yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
David Ty?
Do you want me to do that when I just say the name of the project? Or do you want me to do that now?
Whenever you come up later. It was, what I'm talking about is the mental health graduation yesterday by this young man and just that whole program. Unless you want to come up now, you can do whatever you want to.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you very much. I just have a couple of remarks to make about the budget and to thank everybody. And then I do, I'll comment just briefly on the graduation. I appreciate you being there. Appreciate Ms. Caker being there. We absolutely love the support. So just a few things. Last year, just to bring things into perspective, our budget was $112,781, the county matching $15,379. Since last year, we had about five or six participants. We've tripled our participant load to 15, which is tremendous growth for, especially a mental health court. Our budget for this year, our given budget is up to $163,506 with a match of $28,854. We've gotten, we received more funds for a part-time case manager. And for the first time after aggressively, I guess, productively, diplomatically, writing as well as I could in the grant for transportation, we got $1,800 for transportation, which you may know, a lot of our participants have struggled with transportation, not only coming out of jail, but so they can get a job or find a used car. And so we're going to try our best to find a vendor, a taxi, somebody, you know, you have to have a vendor that we can get approved, that we can call and give these people rides if they need them. We're struggling with one young man that just came out of PDC, and so that's extraordinarily helpful. So we're showing CACJ that, you know, with them, you have to show, you have to show your growth and your progress, and then they'll give you the money, and that's exactly what they did this year. So I couldn't be more happy with our budget. We've increased our surveillance from three hours. Two years ago, we had three hours of surveillance. They gave us money for. We've now got 17 hours. And so that's at least an hour a week per participant, if not more. But it's been writing innovation and surveillance grants that come in October. It's been writing emergency grants that come in January. And it's a slow grinding process, but if you've got the numbers and you've got the success, they'll give you the money. And so with that also comes with y'all's generous match that we couldn't do what we do without. So I'm super excited about this upcoming fiscal year. Yes, we have to squeeze every penny we've got. Of course, we would like more, but we're at a point now where we're a lot more comfortable with being able to provide full one-on-one therapy services each week. Surveillance, very thorough surveillance each week, drug testing. We've changed our lab each week and not have to parse and parcel those like a couple times a month just to get us by. So I couldn't be more proud of the program and the budget, and I thank y'all very much for your matching contribution. We're off to a good start for this fiscal year, I feel, and we can slowly grow. I predict that we'll have more participants, and what's important with that is we've got the jail very, very well working with us. You know, we've got 15 people out of jail that are in our program that committed felonies that would not be maybe having more, you know, some hope or some help and assistance that they wouldn't get probably if they were just out on their own. So, you know, hopefully, we've got 15 more people that will not commit crimes again and reduce the recidivism in this county. We feel like we're aggressively and progressively doing our part. I know there's other things in place to move mental health along in Paulding County and just glad to be a part of it. So I want to say thank you very, very much. And the other thing, yesterday, we had one of our graduates, Ty Lowman, what Mr. Carmichael was talking about just a few minutes ago, graduate. He was in the program 22 months, not 18. It took him a little bit longer. They all mess up, which is perfectly fine. We all backslide, and that's what happened. But he obtained his associate's degree in our program. He went to hundreds of hours of one-on-one therapy, hundreds of hours of classroom attendance, drug testing, community service. Our program does the once-a-year community backpack outreach where we, everybody from mental health court, including the participants, that's coming up soon, puts all that together to give to the children in the county. We've got, we now have a mental health court garden and lots of corn and squash and vegetables popping up, so they're real excited about that. They stay involved with that. So we were able to do a lot more things for the participants as well as Mr. Lowman. And he is, already got a full-time job. It's been drug-free for a long time, and that's what the program's about. So thank y'all very much, and I appreciate you letting me say that. We'd ask that, of course, that budget and matching be approved. I think that's all I can say.
Thank you. We cover it later in the agenda here, but really, really appreciate that program.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Means a lot to Paulding County.
All right. Thank you.
Item two, or I'm sorry, item three on the bid awards is discuss action to approve the purchase of three inmate transport Tahos and one LT Tahoe from Hardy Chevrolet in the amount of $223,806.97. Ms. Tabitha Pollard?
Good morning. Purchasing vehicles for the past few years has been kind of a challenge, so sometimes there are vehicles available, and sometimes they're only available for certain ordering timeframes. This particular request, Hardy approached our fleet maintenance department and told them that the 24, there were some additional 24 Tahos that were available if we could get our order in, and it would save us from experiencing the 25 increase. So we're ordering them off the 24, out of the 24 available vehicles.
Tabitha, is there an estimate of how much that saved us?
I do not have an estimate, but the price has gone up anywhere from 10%, 12%, 15% over the past few years, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Bid award number four is discuss action to award the 2024 asphalt project contract five to the lowest responsible bidder, Northwest Georgia Paving Incorporated, in the amount of $2,938,294.55. The project will be funded by Georgia Department of Transportation, L-MIG funds of $2669,711.54 and Paulding County General Funds in the amount of $268,583.01. The streets scheduled in the contract are in all the post. George?
Yes, sir. The Finance Department advertised the DOT's project identified as the 2024 Asphalt Project Contract Five. The contract consisted of 8.34 miles of milling, patching, leveling, and plant mix resurfacing on four county roads and 13 subdivision streets in three subdivisions. Eight bids received and opened on May 24th. DOT has reviewed the eight bids and recommend award to the lowest responsible bidder, Northwest Georgia Paving, in the amount of $2,938,294.55. This was 1.2% less than the county estimate. As you said earlier, Chairman, the funding for this contract provided by additional G.L-MIG funding, which is local maintenance and improvement grant funding in the amount of $2,669,711.54, which does not require a county match. This funding was a supplemental increase in the FY24 budget with the state of Georgia that was signed off by the House, Senate, and the governor. So we're very appreciative of that extra funding that we were not planning on, but obviously, we have many uses for it. The remaining $268,583.01 will be paid out of general fund, and as you said, the streets and roads scheduled in the contracts are located in all posts. And if approved, the completion date for the work is 12 months from the notice to proceed issuance.
Any questions for George? Thanks for that good brief.
Thank you, sir.
Number five is discuss action to award the repair and overlay of the asphalt parking lot at 210 Paulding Lane to J&amp;W Concrete and Asphalt Construction Incorporated. This is in the amount of $157,590. It's going to be funded by SPOS Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Funds and will be used for this project, which is located in Post Two. And Jeremiah Fields, Mr. Fields is going to report.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We have several asphalt projects going on, it looks like. So we've got several bids on the repair and the overlay, and J&amp;W was the cheapest. It's 563 yards of repair, which what they will have done by the end of June for the senior center, so they can move in June 28th. It's almost 13,000 yards of overlay. They'll have that done by the end of summer and restraping.
Cool. And I qualify to go there, so.
Yes, sir, you do.
Good job, Jeremiah. The project, I've been over there. The floors look amazing.
Yes, ma'am. It's going to be a great facility.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right. We move on to reports from committees and departments. Finance Director Tabitha Pollard is going to, has worked hard on a fiscal year 2025 budget, and she's going to tell us a little bit about that.
This time comes faster every year. But what we wanted to do today is just take a moment and make sure that the public is aware that the budget is out for review. So we're required to publish a budget by June 1st. We did that May 31st and posted it in an advertisement in the paper stating that it was available for review. And we have it online, and there are a couple of copies, very short summaries in the back, and we have a printed copy in the lobby here at the VOC office. But what I wanted to do is take a moment and go through basically a little bit about the budget. We will hold a public hearing on July 23rd at 10 o'clock, and then the budget will be adopted, will be before you for adoption on August 13th. So when you're looking at the budget, these three pages, they're the first, you've got the cover page, and then these are the first three pages that are in the budget. This is what you will actually be approving. So all of the additional pages are just backup documentation for each one of these. So the most interest that we get is the general fund, which is first column, and that includes all of your departments and the activities. Basically, it's the general operations of the county. The second column is fire tax, so that is fire operations of the county. The third column is the 911, so that is a special revenue fund that you have revenues come into to fund the expenses. And then you have the special courts funds. Several of our courts hold funds within each one of them, and those funds are utilized for different things, like you have the DA holds victim witness, the Superior Court holds law library, and on. Then you have the solid waste enterprise fund. Enterprise means that it functions like a business, so the enterprise fund is a flexible budget. If the revenues are there, then it's. So the enterprise fund is a flexible budget. If the revenues are there, then it's before you for purpose. But the revenues aren't guaranteed. So if the revenues aren't there, you have to scale back your operations, is what an enterprise fund is. And we have two on here, the solid waste and the water and sewer, which is the next to the last column. The SPOST column is your penny sales tax that is used for capital projects. You have recreation, DOT, public safety. And we have some fairly large projects in there. The budget detail doesn't give a lot of that yet, but it will be in there around July 1st for review. But it's, it's changes as we go because it's all capital projects. So it changes pretty fluidly throughout the year. And then you have the debt service. So we have a couple of outstanding debt obligations, one being courthouse and the two being the jail. So that's primarily what those are for. There are some other minor ones, but. And then the CIP fund, the other thing I wanted to mention was in the CIP fund, if you look at the first page, the revenue, there is a, those expenses are fairly large. If you look at the third page, you'll see in the General Fund, there is a movement of funds over to that CIP fund. So basically, your, the projects themselves are budgeted in a CIP fund. The cost for those projects is budgeted in the General Fund. So we move the money from the General Fund to the CIP because they're large projects. And otherwise, again, we'll have a public hearing on July 3rd, and our budget adoption will be August 13th. Unless you have any other questions.
What happens on July 3rd?
23rd. Sorry.
23rd.
I said July 3rd. July 23rd is the public hearing.
Great report, Tabitha, and we'll pass out the test now.
Yeah.
Very difficult time of year to sort all that out and work with all the departments. And kudos to you and the, and the commissioners for your involvement in this. So, nobody's signed up today for public participation on agenda items. Under the consent agenda, the, I read them this morning, but item six is to adopt a water job classification for meter services specialist. And item seven is to declare the, this big graph or spreadsheet listed items as surplus and approve their disposal through auction, trade, or donation to Jipstick. And I'm not going to read out all these vehicles. They are all vehicles. There's a sheet in the back if you want to look at the details. There's like 12 different surplus items. Item eight is to approve the following street to be accepted for perpetual maintenance, and that's Whitley Crossing. So would any of the commissioners like to move any of these items to a regular new business? Hearing none, we'll leave them in the consent agenda. We have no old business this morning. Under new business, item nine is discuss action to adopt ordinance number 2024-06 and ordinance regulating the operation of coin-operated amusement machines, COAMs, within Paulding County. And our county attorney, Mr. Jason Phillips, is going to enlighten us on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. COAM, coin-operated amusement machine, you know, by its very definition, it's something that you can put a cone, a coin or a token in, and then I guess you can play it and be amused by it. So.
Have you done it?
I've done it several times. A COAM, though, the general category of COAM is very large. It includes things such as crane machines, some video games. The purpose of this ordinance here today is to regulate what are called Class B COAMs. A Class B COAM is one where you can accumulate replays, and then once those replays are accumulated, you can exchange them for some merchandise. Now, what merchandise you can exchange it for is highly regulated by state law. COAMs in general are actually regulated by the Georgia Lottery Corporation. And in regard to Class B machines, they're defined as machines that allow you to redeem accumulated tokens, vouchers, or tickets for non-cash merchandise, prizes, toys, gift certificates, or novelties, so long as the amount of the tokens, vouchers, or tickets received does not exceed $5 for a single play. Most of what people think of when they hear of COAM, Class B COAM, are video poker machines. That's where the highest potential for abuse lies in allowing, you know, certain, certain addictive behaviors related to gambling to, to allow it to come to some sort of bad fruition if it's not regulated properly. The General Assembly has put a lot of severe restrictions on the operation of COAMs and COAM payouts. If you're not paying out consistent with the statute, you are in violation of state law, and that state law that you're in violation of is likely to be a gambling violation. The General Assembly, in doing this, has authorized counties and cities to regulate COAMs in 10 specific areas at the request of the Commissioner, Commissioner Galloway in particular. I have looked through the areas that counties are authorized to legislate. I have recommended six of the 10 that the county go ahead with an ordinance on, because I believe the six of these 10, and it varies on how you count them. The four that I've omitted are, I don't think, worth the time and effort it takes for the amount of enforcement return you get. But what you'll see highlighted in this ordinance is a cap, a maximum of six Class B COAMs will be permitted. Those COAMs have to be kept in plain view inside the business. The COAMs have to, there can be a distance requirement, and this ordinance will put a distance requirement in. It is consistent with the distance requirements for the, for the sale of alcohol. There will be penalties involved. Typically, your first ordinance fine is $100 plus surcharges. And this one, I recommend setting the minimum at $500 plus surcharges. The idea there is to provide a little, little more of a deterrent to make sure that the operators and owners of the Class B COAMs are complying with the statute and are not looking aside and are willing to pay a low fine as a cost of doing business. Finally, once this goes into place, there's really no grandfathering, all right? There's no, you don't get to keep 10 machines because you've always had 10 machines. You'll be capped at six, but the various owners and operators will have 12 months to bring their, their operations into compliance with the new ordinance. We chose the 12 months. I think Rome Floyd has also passed a recent COAM. They also have a 12 months, 12-month compliance period. So with that said, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, great reporting description, Jason.
I just want to say I appreciate your work on that. You know, people think, well, who's got more than six COAMs? And another commissioner sent me an article where a Kroger in another part of town, and town being Atlanta, not Paulding County, put in a whole roomful of COAMs in a back room, and shoppers were on the news saying they didn't even feel safe going there anymore. So we don't want any of that. Thank you.
All right, moving along, new business, item 10 is discuss action to adopt Resolution 2024-14, authorizing the chairman to execute the modification documents and all other documents related to the Jifa loan number CW2021022. Ms. Pollard is back up.
This loan was entered into with Jifa back in 2022, and we experienced a few hurdles with easements and that kind of thing. So the project is reaching construction now. The purpose of this loan modification is to extend the completion date to July 1 of 2025. And otherwise, it basically has no, no changes to the loan, other than it's just extending the completion date.
Any questions on item 10? Hey, item?
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, the project is the sewer extension in Hiram, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The 92 sewer extension.
Item 11 is discuss action to authorize the chairman to sign the grant agreement with Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to accept the VAWA, which is Violence Against Women Act, grant with a match of $16,000 from General Funds for the, for a total amount of $66,667. Ms. Pollard?
This is a grant that Paulding has had with Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for many, many, many years. And sometimes they're able to waive the match, and sometimes they're not. So the grant before you has a match of $16,667, but it's an ability for us to get $50,000. And we use those funds towards personnel that is providing services to victims. So victim witness personnel, as Chairman said, through Violence Against Women's Act.
Any questions on that one? Okay, I don't see your helper Judge Bucci here, so I guess you got the next one too. Number 12 is discuss action to authorize the chairman to sign the grant award documents for the Drug Court for the grant period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
I understood that Judge Bucci was in jury trials this week, so he was not available to be here. This, again, has been a grant, I didn't write down the years, but we've had this grant for quite a few, few years as well. They did send me some stats. They have inducted 157 participants into the Drug Court program, and they have graduated 98 participants, and they currently have 23 participants participating and five under evaluation. So, and the, the matching piece of this is coming from the date fund, so it's not actually coming from the General Fund, which is, the date fund is a surcharge that's applied to drug charges that are accepted within, are charged within the Superior Court.
Awesome program. I'm proud of all the workers over across the concrete there, across the patio. Aren't you still up? Well, we already did. Judge Woodall, so are we complete on that, Judge Woodall?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. So.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd just read that item.
All right. Item 13 is discuss action to authorize the chairman to sign the grant award documents for the Mental Health Court for the grant period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Got it, Steve? Got it? All right. Moving on to number 14, the Tabitha Pollard Show. Discuss action to authorize the chairman to sign the grant award documents for the DUI Court for the grant period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Obviously runs on fiscal years. And Judge O'Connor is here, so.
She is here, and they have gone and done a lot of work for this grant. So we, I'm presenting it before you, but this, this has been entirely on the state court. Judge O'Connor and Rhonda Franklin have gone above and beyond to, in making the application for this particular program. And this is brand new, so this is new to our new state court. It'll be a new, a new program. They had originally requested for 20 participants, and they were awarded for approximately 10 participants. And so that's what you have before you, and it's for federal funds of $112,628, with a matching piece of $19,876 and a total grant of $132,504. And hopefully we'll have participants that have completed the program to give next year, and from there, maybe the grant will grow as some of the others have.
Any questions, comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, all three of those accountability court grants are, the match is with the date fund, which Tabitha's already mentioned. So it is a unique fund, and it can only be used for certain things, and this is one of the, one of the things it can be used for.
Thank you, Frank. That's a good word on how it works. I would also like to encourage people that are in the room here or watching online to try to attend one of the graduations. That'll really let you know what a great effect it has on individuals. Judge Woodall mentioned people that would be in jail. They're not. They're recovering, and they're productive citizens. And if you're the one, bring some tissue. Item 15 is discuss action to approve the change order to the Solocom Guardian Refresh and Upgrade Project with AT&amp;T in the amount of $65,270.77 to be paid with 911 fees. Mr. David Mumford.
Morning.
Morning.
As much as I hate to bring change orders before the board, this is one that we can't avoid. Back in April of '23, you guys approved a contract with AT&amp;T to upgrade the 911 telephone system and to refresh the system. The original contract was in the amount of, I think, $487,898. And it took AT&amp;T almost a year to mobilize the project. They had assigned project managers and stuff, and we had about two calls into the project. We realized that they had left some stuff out of the original contract that would require them to take us offline for an extended period of time while they replaced racks and stuff in our server room, which was not acceptable. And also, they left out some of the equipment that we need to upgrade the backup 911 center to have the same capabilities that we have at the primary center. And so that's what this change order, it incorporates all of that, new racks and equipment that we need for the backup center, as well as taking our current 911 telephone system that we have in laptops and making those available for us to use anywhere. We can plug them in to an internet connection. We can plug them into the, the new, the EMA bus that we're working on, and we'll be able to have 911 service even outside the buildings if we have to. So. And this, this is in the amount of $65,270.77, and we will be paying that out of 911 fees.
Any questions for David?
I have a question.
Yes.
So they left us out of the original bid. Do we, we took, I assume, several bids on this?
Actually, it's a sole source because AT&amp;T is our, our 911 provider. And we, I mean, they're the only ones that provide the service to us. So we get their, we get their pricing on, on the, the equipment. They purchased it from Solocom. Solocom Guardian is the system that we use.
Okay.
But AT&amp;T is our provider, so.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks so much, David.
Thank you.
And item 16 is discuss action to approve the Construction Material Testing and Special Inspection Services Agreement with Geo-Hydro Engineers for the Fire Station 13 project in the estimated amount of $23,248. The project is funded from SPOST and, from SPOST proceeds and is located in Post Four on Old Carterville Road. And we're glad to have Mr. Green report on it.
Good morning.
Morning.
Our contractor is beginning work this week. This agenda item is for the Independent Testing and Laboratory Services Agreement. The consultant will perform quality checks on site and also takes samples for laboratory testing according to the project specifications. Work starts with the compaction verification for the embankment supporting the foundation areas, and will continue on various items throughout the project. This is a common service we employ on public projects to make sure that Paulding County gets what it pays for. The end result is, after we turn the keys over to property management, is we will have a building that will perform well for many years to come. If you have any questions, I'm glad to try to answer. Thank you.
I know our firefighters in the back, Chief Pelfry and Brandon are excited about it. And I guess we're going to stick some shovels in the ground pretty soon. Any questions for Scott? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the conclusion of regular business this morning. Public participation on non-agenda items. We had someone sign up, but is not here this morning. Any comments from the commissioners? Any celebrations, announcements, anything on your mind? I've actually got a couple here. One is, you notice our county clerk looks a little different this morning. So we're, we're glad to have Steve Grimsley substituting for Rebecca Meredith, who's on vacation this, this week. And so Steve, thank you for your work, extra work. Also, you probably won't recognize this name. Pete O'Hara was the Museum of Flight Director. He's, he received, he lives in the state of Tennessee, just in Hickson, Tennessee, near Chattanooga. He did live there. He passed away about a year ago now. And the state of Tennessee with House Joint Resolution 1131 did a resolution to honor him. I'm not going to read the whole thing. I'm just going to read a couple of parts of it. But he was a very active and instrumental here at the airport and events and just in leadership of the Museum of Flight. If you haven't been out there, you ought to go out. A resolution to honor the memory of Peter Eric O'Hare. Whereas the members of the General Assembly from Tennessee were greatly saddened to learn of the passing of Peter Eric O'Hare. And whereas Peter Eric O'Hare was an exemplary public servant and consummate professional who worked assiduously to improve the quality of life for the fellow citizens, for his fellow citizens in numerous capacities. And whereas decorated military veteran Peter Eric O'Hare served in the United States Marine Corps Reserve with 40 years of service and a retirement rank of CW05, there are not many CW05s, in which, well, it says here, in which there are few. Whereas as a United States Marine Corps, whereas a United States Marine, Mr. O'Hare participated in both Desert Storm operations and several other conflicts during his military career. And whereas Mr. O'Hare enjoyed the loving companionship of his wife Susan O'Hare and was the proud father of Savannah Mello O'Hare. And whereas Peter O'Hare leaves behind an indelible legacy of integrity and poverty in public life, compassion and loyal in private life, and diligent and dedication in all his chosen endeavors. And we honor the memory of Peter Eric O'Hare reflecting fondly upon the impeccable character of his stalwart commitment to living the examined life with courage and conviction. And it was about twice that long, but I knew Pete very well. Actually, he worked for me for a while. But we're going to miss him and his presence around, around Paulding County. Anybody else want to bring up anything this morning?
I will. I just want to say that we've lost one of our very own citizens here in Paulding County. It's a great loss. He was a great man. I'm speaking of Jim Tally from Tally Richardson and Cable. His funeral service is tomorrow, if you would like to attend. But he was not only an attorney for Tally Richardson and Cable, but he was a man that loved and cared for this county very much. I think that man was involved in everything that has to do with Paulding County. So please keep Ramona and their family in your prayers.
One else? The county manager has a request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'm requesting that the board considerate, board consideration for a motion to go into executive session for personnel and to adjourn from that meeting.
We have a motion to go into executive session and I will, well, I'll make the motion. County manager just introduced it. I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for personnel. There's a second.
Second?
We have a second by Commissioner Kaker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? carries 4 zeros, so we'll go into executive session for personnel. We will adjourn from the room across the hall and not be coming back in here. So I need a motion to adjourn to do that. Already did it? Okay. Got it covered. We stand adjourned.